Good morning. It is Tuesday, September 9th already, 2025, and I'll call to order the Story County Board of Supervisors meeting. Please stand if you are able to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If there are no changes, I take a motion to adopt today's agenda.
So moved.
Second. They're moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. Now's the time for public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. There's someone in the public meeting room that would like to make public comment? Please go to the podium, or if you're online, please raise your hand. And seeing none, we'll close public comment number one. We do have a proclamation this morning. It's consideration of a proclamation recognizing September as National Voter Registration Month and September 16th as National Voter Registration Day. Supervisor Merkin, would you start us off?
Gladly. Whereas registering to vote empowers eligible citizens to exercise their right to vote. And whereas while Iowa consistently maintains a high rate of voter registration, there are eligible citizens who are not currently registered to vote. And whereas county registration is maintained at the county level, and anyone moving into Story County is a new registrant regardless of previous voter registration status. And whereas Story County has a mobile population and registered voters who change residence within the county need to update their registration by completing a voter registration form in order to know their correct polling location.
And whereas Story County is the home of Iowa State University, recognizes that many younger citizens participate in elections for the first time in Story County and encourages all who are eligible to register to vote. And whereas Iowa's voter registration process is readily available with online voter registration, Election Day registration, and applications available through government agencies across the state. And whereas Story County provides its eligible residents with a postage-paid voter registration form available at the county's website.
And whereas the need for public information and education regarding voter registration is crucial as Iowa voters prepare to take part in the upcoming 2025 city school election on November 4. And whereas we encourage all interested citizens and all appropriate media outlets and civic organizations to participate in the nonpartisan voter registration awareness campaign to encourage the maximum participation of qualified voters in Iowa. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim September 2025 as National Voter Registration Month and Tuesday, September 16, 2025, as National Voter Registration Day. I move the proclamation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. It is approved. Auditor Martin, did you want to say anything? And then we can do a picture?
Yes, please. The League of Women Voters of Ames and Story County, we have representative here today. They are doing multiple drives on next Tuesday. And if we could get a photo with them. They will be, I think, at both Hyvees and Wheatfield. Is that right? Sorry. I should have asked. Oh. They will be at the Wheatfield Co-op from 11 to 2, Ames Public Library from 11:30 to 5:30 p.m., and Hyvee Lincoln Way from 1:30 to 3:30. So if, and again, forms are freely available on our website, or we're always happy to talk to voters in our office as well. Come on down. Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up and do a photo then.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board.
Okay, we have no agency reports. Consideration of minutes.
I move approval.
Second. They're moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. Consideration of personnel actions.
I move approval of personnel actions as presented.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. Consideration of claims.
Move approval of claims.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. Is anyone pulling anything from consent today? If not, I'd take a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Basil?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. Lot on consent today. Public hearing items. Looks like we've got consideration of Resolution 26-17, amended wastewater outfall pipe easement with the City of Cambridge. Morning, Mike.
Good morning, Board.
Morning.
So in 2020, we were approached by the City of Cambridge to allow them to place a wastewater treatment outfall pipe on county property. That was executed via easement. And we recently discovered that the legal description in that easement inappropriately placed that outfall location on adjoining private property. So this effort here is an effort to correct that, to remove that, to correct the easement, put the legal description back on that county property, remove the, remove that interest off of the private property that it's erroneously on. Conservation Board considered this last night and unanimously approved it. The City of Cambridge considered it last night as well and approved it there.
Any questions for Mike?
So it's an error in, like a script, basically. It's not that it's on the wrong property.
Correct. The pipe itself is on county property. The legal description in the easement is, is in error and is on, describes it being on private property, which it is not.
Gotcha. Gotcha. Any other questions for Mike before I open the public hearing?
No.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. If anyone would like to make comments and you're in the public meeting room, please come up to the podium, or if you're online, please raise your hand. If you're on Zoom, and we will call on you. And seeing none, we will close the public hearing. If there's any additional questions, I'd take a motion.
Move approval of Resolution 26-17.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to additional items. The first one was discussion and consideration of $5,000 sponsorship for the 2025 Building Community Breakfast.
May I check today? Meetings a few months ago about this, and this was a, the question is whether to continue this event. And the people who were there were unanimously in favor of continuing it. I believe one of the funders from last time has withdrawn. And I can't remember what we, what we, our sponsorship level was last year. This might be higher. But they have, it's really a well-attended event. It represents the community well and does a really good job of getting people understanding how to work together better. And I think it's a, I think it's a worthy thing. The discussion they're going to have at this, it's awareness and perception, decision-making and practice, and building dynamic cultures. I would recommend that we approve it at the amount requested because I think it is, I think people would miss it. I think our community would be worse off without having this kind of networking among public, private individuals and organizations to basically, you know, say, how can we work better together as an overall community? So. I recommend it's approval. And they have also asked, Chevron has, is donating $3,000, Mary Green Medical Center $2,000, McFarland $2,000. And they've also requested $5,000 from the City of Ames. I don't know if that's on their agenda tonight or not. Any questions?
Was, was your recommendation a motion? Or would you like me to make a motion?
I'll make the motion. I move that we, we grant a $5,000 scholarship to the 2025 Building Community Breakfast.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Merkin?
Aye.
Basil?
Aye.
Haddon's aye. Thank you for bringing that forward.
Sure.
Next, we have discussion and consideration of evaluation process for the Board of Supervisors' direct reports. Good morning, Alyssa.
Good morning, Board members.
Oh, Crystal, good morning.
Crystal is here too, in case.
Good morning.
So our process for the Board's direct reports has always been to handle that. It's, it's an open meeting, and that employee gets the opportunity to request a closed session. The employee has to request it, not the Board. There was a Court of Appeals case that kind of changed that interpretation of what meets that definition, whether you can go into closed session. So I just wanted to bring it to the Board. If we, if we continue to have that, parts of the evaluation may not meet that threshold and therefore have to be done in open session. And then I also gave the other, there, there are a few other options that the Board can take into consideration of how they want to handle their direct reports. And this is only two, two positions here at the county. I don't know, Crystal, you want to add anything about?
No, I mean.
The Court of Appeals case?
So yeah, so basically, the Court of Appeals issued the opinion earlier this year. It is on appeal to the Iowa Supreme Court. It will be submitted next month, on October 7th. As the, it was the City of Cedar Rapids case, and they have stopped further review because this case, this issue is such an important issue. And there have been multiple amicus briefs as well been filed on the case. But yeah, so basically, the Court of Appeals, in that particular, in this particular case, the individual simply just requested a closed session. There was no finding made. So, and the Court of Appeals found that to be, did not comply with the statute. There has to be a finding made by the Board that it would cause needless and irreparable injury. And that finding can be done in closed session. So, you know, you can go into closed session to make the determination whether you should continue with the closed session or not. They said that that's fine because that would be really difficult to make that determination. You couldn't unring the bell essentially about that individual. But then the finding would need to be made, and then the Board would act accordingly. Either come out of closed session to conduct the evaluation or remain in closed session. Also, potentially, as you're going through the closed session, excuse me, the open session, it could be, a question could be posed, or a topic could come up during the evaluation, in which time you could evaluate it again in closed session. So they, they contemplate going in and out potentially in this situation. So I guess I'm here for questions.
I do have a question.
Sure.
So you'd have to be in open session, potentially, or in and out, if the three of us do the evaluation of the two. But what if you have just one Board member who is doing the evaluations and then putting that on the agenda?
That, then you wouldn't be subject to the open meetings law because the three of you wouldn't be present to constitute that public meeting. So there is no problem with the Board Chair, for instance, conducting the evaluation. Would not be subject to open meetings law.
What, what if the review was done individually? Like notes on paper were then provided to the Chair, and the Chair does the evaluation? Is that?
The other two supervisors give input?
Yes.
To the Chair?
Yes. Is that a walk-in quorum?
That would make me a little bit more concerned.
Yeah.
With that, because obviously, we want to make sure that we're complying statute. And that would, that would make me concerned. I think the cleanest way would be you continue with conducting them in public, and we'll just have to navigate the going in and out of closed session and making sure that the Board makes those findings if a closed session is needed. Or another clean option would be just the Board Chair, for instance, conduct those evaluations.
Sure.
I mean, there's nothing to prevent all the other individual Boards meeting with the individual and providing feedback, but I just think that would probably be the best option.
So, so there's really no, no requirement in the code that the evaluation of a direct report to the Board of Supervisors has to go on an agenda?
No.
Okay. And that's where we run afoul of this. Yeah, I've read, you know, basically, I've read, I've read the decision, and it didn't really say that, but that's why I wanted to clarify that. I have a question about the closed session language, needless and irreparable injury. I think I understand irreparable. I don't understand how you would say needless. I don't know what the definition there, how you would, how you would use that as a requirement. Do you?
So the Court of Appeals did not address that.
Crystal, could you bring your mic just a little bit closer?
Hello? Okay. So the Court of Appeals didn't specifically address what constitutes needless and irreparable injury. Perhaps the Iowa Supreme Court will address that because it, because they are obviously going to be making a decision on the case. Just looking at the dictionary definition of needless, that would be unnecessary or avoidable. I think that if a, the Board made a finding that there was going to be specific and negative items being discussed about the individual, then, then I think that you could make the argument that a closed session was warranted. So, and the Court of Appeals specifically went in that, they use the word specific and negative. And so it can't just be a potential, right? It has to be, there has to be, everyone, there needs to be a finding that there is going to be some negative items being discussed about that person.
I, um. And it seems like with number three, placing the evaluation on the consent agenda, we'd probably have to have a notice that said we might go into closed session on the agenda itself, so that's another complication there. And honestly, I don't see the value. I mean, when I came on the Board, you know, this was, you know, we, this is how we evaluated these two positions that are direct reports. But there's nothing in the code that says we have to continue doing the evaluation this way. So personally, I'd just as soon take out one and three as options because I, all the other employees of the county don't have to go through this. You know, are we going to have, you know, is this going to be an open session? Do we have to do closed session? And I just don't think it's necessary.
I would concur with that. I guess my question is, so we, going along with the conversation Supervisor Merkin was just having, just so I'm clear. Number three is the same thing as, as number two, except for it's then placed on the agenda for the full Board to approve it.
For the full Board to approve.
And number two is just saying you wouldn't have to do that?
Correct. So the third option would give the full Board the, the, the option to approve it. And they, they might want to pull and discuss if they don't agree, if the other two Board members don't agree with certain parts of the evaluation. So that's where it could go into, you know, if, if it meets that definition of.
So you'd still have to meet a certain, the needless?
Yeah.
Definition?
Yeah, you'd still be in that hole.
No, I, that's, that's what I was just.
Ambiguous.
Can clarify on.
Pause.
Now, there are valuable points to having input from all three Board members. And so that's something the Board needs to take into consideration too. You're three individual Board members, yet you're evaluating one direct report. So it, there is not a perfect method.
And my sense.
This evaluation process in counties and cities. Cities have to do this with their city manager that reports to the city council. And, and I'm kind of waiting to hear how, how they're handling some of that. But again, there is no perfect method to this.
I'm, I'm almost kind of feeling like staying with number two. And you said it's going to the Supreme Court, so things may change or we may think it back or whatever, if need be, but.
Yes, the Iowa Supreme Court could reverse what the Court of Appeals. So the lower court, I mean, so basically, the lower court found that this case should have been dismissed. The Court, it was appealed, Court of Appeals disagreed with that judge, and now we're going to have seven new judges looking at it, right? So yeah, and like I said, there's lots of briefs filed on this case because it's such an important topic for all the, so we can.
And it's not just evaluating, it's hiring.
Yes, correct.
So if you're going to hire somebody, and, you know, in the past, when we've hired a Board direct report, we have had that, I mean, it's, it's open meetings. You have to, you have to comply with that. But that individual has always had the opportunity to request that the discussion of their professional competency as it relates to that position be done in closed session. According to this, this decision, you know, I don't think when you hire somebody that that's going to meet that threshold to go into closed session, from what, what I've seen. So those discussions would need to be also had in open session, which could cause issues with, you know, depending on who your applicant is, they might, you know.
And I think, yeah, there needs to be more discussion on how.
On that one, that's not an immediate.
Looking at what we've got in front of us today. I, you know, regardless of what the Supreme Court says, I think we have an opportunity here to make a, to change something or to make some improvements maybe on a process that maybe we've not all been totally comfortable with at times. These are unique positions, these two positions, because they really work equally with all three supervisors. When you, when Supervisor Basil asked, could we give, if the Chair were doing it, could we give some input? You expressed some perhaps concern about a walk-in quorum or something like that. And that's why I think the cleanest thing is to go with option four.
Oh.
Otherwise, that's only, you know. Otherwise, the two other supervisors cannot, could be on thin ice if they were giving, giving their input to the Chair. That's what I'm hearing.
So if there, what if there is, I mean, how do you determine then if all three are, I mean, so, so different in their review? I mean, you would hope you wouldn't because you're working with these people every day.
I don't think they.
How do you figure out if someone is rating somebody much lower than somebody else and?
I don't know practically how it matters because unless the person's on a performance plan, they get their step increase automatically now, correct?
There's no merit component. There used to be a merit component where the Board.
Again, so, so, so the only, so there's really no decision that's being made on it. It's just feedback to our direct reports on how we feel they're doing. Is there's?
If there was a lot of difference amongst the three Board members, it, it would, for the individual getting that feedback, it could be confusing. You know, how, how am I really doing? And, and it's hard because even doing it in a Board meeting, you're just averaging all three.
So, so how was it prior to going into close, or has it always been in close session? I mean, since I've been on, that's what we've done.
Yeah. We made that change in, gosh, I can't remember what year. And we went in and I brought it to the Board, and they decided to do the collective one evaluation, all three Board members in an open session with the opportunity to go into closed session. Before that, it was the Board Chair. And whether they were getting input from the other Board members, I honestly don't know. I, I don't know if, if the, you know, if they met and discussed it or not. I, you know, that would be, you know, getting input. I mean, they're not making a decision, but they're getting input in order for that Board Chair to make a decision. It could be a walk-in quorum too. So.
Right.
You know, it just depends.
Well, I know it's not the most efficient way to do it, but I, I agree with you Supervisor Merkin because I have concerns about just the Board Chair being the one to do the evaluation. Because as we know, personalities come and go, and sometimes they don't, they don't, they clash. And I don't want to see us set up a situation where that's the one person that gets to do that review.
And I'm currently not Board Chair, but if I were, I would not want to be doing it my, just myself because I think all three supervisors have valuable input. Because we all work on different projects with all of you or same projects. And I'm also real concerned about, I just, number one, you know, the prevent needless and irreparable injury, the going in and out of closed session kind of thing, just that, oh, I hear. How many mistakes could you make? I mean.
Well, and the going in and out.
They're making some difficult decisions on the fly. I do not think that's appropriate.
And how is going in and out of closed session not, not resulting in potential irreparable injury to their reputation? Like, ooh, we can't talk about this. Need to go into closed session. Like, just the lingering possibility of what is it that we were going to talk about or whoever the Board is is going to talk about? I think right there, there's potential for impact on someone's reputation. I don't like this at all, you guys.
I know. Well, and that it, it goes to the Supreme Court?
It's submitted.
But we don't know when.
It will be submitted on October 7th.
Yeah. And they may or may not take it up?
No, they are.
They are taking it up.
Oh, no, no, they took it. No, that's, no, no. And all the briefs have been filed, including all those amicus briefs that I was talking about. No, it, it will be submitted officially on October 7th. They will be able to render, review everything and render a decision.
And I don't know that that's going to change my mind.
It could take a long time. Well, that's what I thought. It, it can, the Iowa Supreme Court, they could take their time.
I don't think how they would rule would change my mind on this issue because I think it goes way beyond just this case. And whether you do things in closed session or open session, I think it just goes into what's the best process that we can use to evaluate our two direct reports? And, and I don't think the Supreme Court's going to help us on that.
So, um. I'll take a motion. I, I understand four, and, and I could go along with that. I do think that it's just kind of time-consuming for the two direct reports to go through three individuals. But I also concur that you want to make sure that everybody's able to provide input. And what if you have a different Board? And, you know, they're, depending how they work or whatever, you might want that input. But I do want to recognize that I do, at least for me, recognize that that's a lot of time to do three different, three different ones, and that's.
And then they're conflicting, that might cause.
You know, and that's what.
Other issue, yeah.
Does cost me.
But that could be.
Indigestion.
Yeah. But, but that would be on the employee if there's some conflicting to maybe, I, I don't know how we go about that.
Well, there's nothing to say that if we find through this year, doing three just doesn't seem to work, we couldn't go back and say.
But you can change it.
Oh, we wanted to do just one person, and it's, doesn't necessarily have to be the Board Chair. I mean, it could be, or we could say, one of the supervisors will.
We, we did, we do have other Boards that, that oversee directors. Now, the difference I view with their situations, their Board Chair is that Director's point of contact, and they work with that Board Chair. They have meetings with them. They're like, even though they report to the Board, their liaison is that Board Chair, and they don't have a lot of contact with the other Board members. So the other Board members don't necessarily know the day-to-day performance of that Director. Where your direct reports work within your office, you see them every day. You have a better indication of what, you know, you're going to know everything of what they do. That's not possible, but you would have a better indication of their performance than some of the other Boards where they really don't have any contact with that Director other than their biannual, or not biannual, bi-monthly meeting or whatever they have with, or monthly meeting. So, again, there's not a, there's not a right or wrong way to do the evaluations. It is really the preference of the Board on how they want to handle it.
Is it not enough if the person being evaluated, for that person to say? for that person to say, well, I don't know what you're going to say, I don't know what we're going to talk about? Um, and so I want the whole thing in closed session.
That's exactly what this case says we can't do.
But they didn't make a record, they didn't make a finding. So I guess that's the hair I'm splitting here. They didn't even make a finding.
Correct, but they, the, the Court of Appeals talks about how they see, foresee this in and out of closed session. Does that make sense? You can go, you can go into clothes, so it can be discussed. And if there is going to be discussion on something negative, then that portion of the evaluation can be done and closed. Um, but they, 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 they said efficiency should not take priority over transparency. And so, yes, a portion could be done enclosed if there is going to be some, you know, that finding is made, that there will be some negative things, but the rest of the evaluation then should be done in open session.
Yeah, but, but then going into closed session is possibly resulting in a negative impact on that individual, because now everybody in open session knows we're going to talk about something negative. Like.
Yeah, this is, this is the interpretation. That is correct, but this, this is how, this is the law as it stands right now.
We don't have to go there, we'll go there.
Yeah, yeah. Don't want to.
But yeah, I agree that that does look. Oh, I, I mean, yeah, looking in at it.
Their assumptions based on.
Yeah, whereas before it was, you know, what, it's a, it's a co, it is a confidential personnel action, you know, and, and, and as far as a record, that evaluation is a confidential record. It is not subject to open records.
Right.
But if it's done in open session.
Then it is.
Then it would be, per se.
And that's why having it.
It's weird, it's confusing.
That's why that's just so different for the two of you, that it's just like, why is it different for you than any other employee?
That's what I was going to say.
That's, that's the thing that bothers me about options one and potentially three.
And there are counties that do it all in open session. You know, their comment is nobody comes to our meetings and they don't broadcast it via Zoom. But, but they could come. You could have, you could have a, a room full of constituents or employees. Yeah.
I believe legislation that changed is all government entities have to provide electronic means.
Oh, so now it will be. Yeah, so in the past, they weren't, they didn't have to do that.
So all of them have to have that now.
It's, yeah, it's interesting. And we're not alone. Um, this is any city or county that has um, positions that report to boards or commissions, so.
All right, so is there a motion? Just more questions?
Well, I, I will make a motion that we, we go with option four.
Second.
Okay, then moved in seconded, any further discussion? None. Faisal?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Edens, aye.
And we can always go back and tweak things.
That's right.
Yeah, if we get a decision, that's.
Be next year.
No, okay.
Well, well, that's if after this year, we find out this, this really.
Yeah, or it's too cumbersome, or again, it's not, it really isn't probably ideal, but.
I, I, yeah, I don't want to cause undue stress on the direct reports. But I also understand is we all three work with you all in kind of different capacities or different issues that arise that we may want to have some input on. How do we do that? And, you know, I don't want to be fine for violating open meetings, because that's increased too, and, yes.
Significantly, yeah.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to be caught with anything doing that. So yes, it's going to be cumbersome and a bit more time consuming and we'll see how it is this year. And we hear complaints that it was just too confusing, well, then we need to reevaluate that.
Yeah, I would, I would like to hear after what, how you guys feel about how that process worked, because, I mean, it's really about you guys.
That's why I said my, my preference would have been option two, but how do you get?
Everybody.
By, by input.
It is all three of you.
Yeah.
Your opinion that, that truly a collective.
Right, right, right.
So, nope, I get it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Crystal. Okay, moving on, we've got discussion and consideration of HVAC and surface cleaning for the animal shelter for $16,181.58. Good morning, Joby and Anna.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay. Yeah, I kind of gave a brief description of the problem we've been fighting at the animal shelter this summer. A lot of it's directly related to, it was humid this summer. I don't know if anybody noticed that. It was humid for a while. And it was humid for a long time. And this is one of our facilities that we bring in large quantities of outdoor air, just because of the type of facility is. And in a couple of those areas, that air is not pre-treated before it comes in the building. It's just the nature of the beast when the building was remodeled. So we ended up with getting to a point where we couldn't stay ahead of it. So we started to notice what we thought could be mold growth. So just to make sure that we were on the right path, we cleaned it up a couple of times, but we got a company in to actually test what, you know, some, we had one wall that was kind of bad, and then some others areas, it's kind of outlined. I gave you the, those test results come back late yesterday afternoon. Um, thankfully, it's none of its real hazardous mold, but I still think it's something we need to address and make sure that it doesn't get worse moving forward. So we had a company come in that specializes in this type of remediation to clean the inside of the ductworks and then some of the surfaces that we, that we found growth on. And then moving forward, we're going to put some additional equipment in. We'll talk about it at budget work session times, kind of probably do it in stages to remedy this from happening again moving forward. So I think that we're just going to, this pattern just seems to be increasing each summer that we have hotter, more hotter days and more humid days each year. So.
Yeah.
That's kind of what brings us here today, because obviously this wasn't in a budgeted expense, and I'm pretty sure it would make a pretty big impact on Anna's operating budget moving forward. So if you got questions, I'd gladly answer them.
So are they thinking if they, if this is addressed, that that will eliminate the issue altogether, like it won't come back?
Yeah, like if you look at the report, at the end of it, it says eliminate the water sources. It's kind of, well, our water source is the humidity that we bring in from outside, so. And then we're also got some areas that we have sealed them up, where we was, we found that hot air from the attic was infiltrating the conditioned air in the space, which instantly condensates. We'd found the wall that had the most growth on it, we discovered went all the way into the attic and wasn't sealed off. So we have sealed that now, and we're also part of our, um, plan moving forward is to add better attic ventilation, so that we don't have such a severe temperature differential between the attic space and the interior space.
Any questions?
Do you anticipate needing to pull out any drywall?
No, not at this time. It, it, most of it was surface, because like, you know, the nature of this facility, dust and dander is a thing that's going to be on stuff. So that's mostly where the growth was attached to that, on the external surfaces of the walls. Inside of them is, the inside of the walls didn't have it, it was all surface.
And there's adequate vapor barriers throughout the attic?
Yes. But ventilation is poor.
Okay, got it. So ventilation will do it? No needed to do anything really construction.
No, most of it is going to be of HVAC nature. Just exchanging the air in the attic is a big thing, and then we've kind of, how the ceilings work in there, we've done some things too that to keep the air flowing better and then pre-treating the air coming in. Because when we remodeled the building, yes, we had a budget to work with and some things got removed that, and one of which was there's two areas that we do not pre-treat the incoming air, so.
Joby, is, um, would we need to replace any of the insulation?
Doesn't appear to be.
Doesn't appear to be? Okay. And then how long? Like, if this were to be approved, when would you be looking at starting and potentially completion?
Probably within a week, it's time. By the time I get ahold of them, schedule it, and then they come in, they look at about two days, they think it'll take them to do.
Is that going to require the animals being moved out or anything?
They can do it while the building's inhabited.
Nice.
Because it's a plant-based disinfectant, antimicrobial, I guess is the more appropriate term, so.
Well, I'm glad to see in the report that none of it is dangerous mold, but.
But we want to make sure. I mean, that was kind of our initial thought, because we've, it's not the first time we've dealt with black mold, so to speak, but also I'm not an expert at it, so wanted to have it tested.
Sure. I don't have any other questions.
Any other questions? Not, is there a motion?
I move approval for the $16,181.58, which is unbudgeted for surface cleaning of HVAC, HVAC and surface cleaning at the animal shelter.
Second. Then moved in seconded, Merkin?
Aye.
Faisal?
Aye.
Edens, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, and next we've got Joby for Facilities Management Quarterly Report.
Yeah, hello again.
Hello again.
Yes, quarter report time. Kind of got the synopsis of what we've been up to this last quarter. One of our big things is, you know, right about at the beginning of this last quarter, we launched our new work order system. Seems to be going well. The feedback from it has been positive. It's a lot more user-friendly than our previous system. It didn't come without some hiccups, one of which you'll kind of notice in the work orders opened from quarter three of '24 to quarter three of this year. There's over a hundred work orders showed as opened. Well, we had a lot of our preventative maintenance work orders that were launching twice. So we had to go in and we believe we got them all cleared up, but I mean, so far, you know, on both ends, on our end, it's, it's got more options than our previous system and the users like it better. It's easier to submit a work order, plus you can communicate on the work order back and forth between people that submitted it and the people that are doing the work order. So that's, that's handy, so. It's going well, um, got, had some big, we still got some big projects going on that kind of lingered for a while, Justice Center remodel. It's, it's down to some fire alarm stuff, and they had to redo an ADA ramp that, the concrete, when it cured, was poor and started to crack, so they started that yesterday. So they mostly have the old ramp tore out and they're going to repour it, so hopefully end of next week, that's done, and they also have few things to do with the fire alarm system that tie into the elevators. That should be done the end of this week, so we're tentatively looking at that project's done the end of next week, so knock on wood. Yeah, it's been a while. It kind of, it went real quick out of the gate and then kind of dropped off, so. And then Range House, we ran into getting some supplies issues, primarily with the metal for the roof and the siding. We did finally get it in the end of last week. They started installing it. They're anticipating being fully done. And the building turned over the end of September, so. Hopefully, once again, that one's wrapped up.
Nice.
And then the generator project, we're still waiting on some electrical gear for the engineer's building. It was supposed to ship the end of August. We were trying to get an up, it, it didn't ship, so now we're trying to get an updated estimated ship date for two pieces of equipment that we can't finish it until we get those, so. Once I know, I'll pass that along. But that one's just sitting in limbo waiting for two parts. Other than that, we've had some people retire in the last couple of years, which has kind of generated some openings in facilities management, so we are very close to having those filled. We do have one onboard. Jesse, he's in our third week, I do believe. Um, he's been working out really well. We have a start date scheduled for another maintenance tech. He starts the end of this month. Then, um, we have, uh, another maintenance tech that's in pre-employment, physical and drug screening phase, so we should be getting those result, results here any day now. And then we have all interviews are complete at this point. Well, I guess we have one more this afternoon, um, but we have some good finalists, and we're, uh, doing reference checks on two others, so we, we hope to have offers out the end of this week, hopefully accepted offers and then move into pre-employment and get full staffed. It's been a while since we've been at full staff, so.
That'll be great.
Good. Yes. Or now, yeah, we're busy, we're behind, but we're plugging away, you know, getting the major stuff done, then moving along on the big HVAC project at, um, HSC, that's another one that equipment has been tough to get our hands on. It's starting to come in, so we got the first wave of the units. They're all in the ceiling now. Now we're working on getting them hooked up and bringing them online, and then hopefully in the next couple of months, we get the next shipment of equipment in, so. It's moving along pretty good. Outside of that, normal day-to-day stuff, gonna unfortunately start getting equipment ready for winter.
Don't say that word.
Other than that, that's kind of what we've been up to in a nutshell. Any questions?
I don't, I don't have any questions, but I just want to say thank you again for the work that your team did in the HSC to get the new bathroom set up. Um, and yeah, and for the work that your team did downstairs in the assessor's office. Um, and kudos on dealing with the flood in the basement.
Yes, and we got that, yeah, that's on here. One of those that, yes, and, and thank you for bringing that up. We, you know, Herald Pike Construction did part of those, both of those projects, we did part of it so that we could, like I said, we're, our staff levels are down, so to get them done in a timely manner, we felt it was justifiable to bring in some help, so to speak.
Well, I just think it's important to, to comment on those, because you made the comment you're behind. And those are three things that were not on your, on your agenda for the year. Um, and two of them were additional requests. They weren't responding to a flood. Um, and so, and both of them were safety-related.
Yeah.
And so it's a big deal that you found a way to get those things done, and I appreciate it, we all do. I've heard, I've heard from several people in both offices or both locations, that they appreciate the work that you did.
Good, yeah, when it comes to safety, we want to, I take that serious and put it at the top of the list. But yeah, the flooding, we've had plenty of rain after, you know, one of those we weren't anticipating what the new generator was going to do to the flow of water on the outside of the building.
Yep.
It found a new place to get in, so. We got that taken care of, and plus we also added, we have water sensors, both spots now too, so even if it does get in, we get notified right away, so. Because that was a one we weren't prepared for, so. Never done that in the 23 years I've been here, so where'd it come from?
Well, thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, moving on, we have discussion and direction on Redline Renewable Energy Power Purchase Agreement. Well, hi, Joby.
Well, hello, long time no see. I got a guest with me here, Terry Devorak with.
Hello.
I think you've met Terry before. They did the solar array at Dakin's Lake, so, um, part of, you know, our climate action plan we've been working on. The Chris with EA Engineering had brought up, you know, he's known Terry through other various things, and Redline's pretty known throughout the state. They do a lot of government projects and stuff. They've kind of seen.
Done a few.
Yeah, done a few, so. Due to some changes that are coming out from the big beautiful bill, there is, some of it kind of has some time constraints, so we felt that the conversation needed to happen a little sooner than waiting for that climate action plan to come through, if it's something that you all are interested in doing, so that's why Terry kind of put the pencil to the paper that he does have some better news to bring up with, since he gave, provided us with that report. I'll kind of let him take. Kind of let him take over, kind of give his little rundown on what may or may not change coming up, and then we can do some questions and talk a little further about next steps, if there is any.
Excellent. Thanks for having me.
Here.
And yeah, seen you before. Mike's back there, so I think he's still happy with what we've provided out there. I know his budget has helped, so, um, we continue. Uh, yeah, the better news is that from what you've gotten already, if we can be expeditious and, and get the solar done this year at the Justice Center, we can get that done. So the proposal I had before, you know, was putting batteries at both places, the admin building here and the Justice Center, and then solar at both contingent upon, um, a USDA grant, which we've had pretty good success, but USDA is making some changes. So that's the only guarantees that if we don't apply, we don't get. But we're confident in, contractors and I, my subs and I are, are pretty confident that we're willing to take the risk on, uh, the grant at the Justice Center. And if we move forward with the whole project, we would do the batteries, do the solar at the Justice Center. So then that increases what we would project for our first year, full year of savings to close to sixteen thousand dollars instead of just ten. Uh, and then if we get the USDA grant approved, then we add the big beautiful solar facility here, the canopies, um, and that would add another twenty-three, twenty-four hundred dollars here. So it's, there's a lot of great opportunities. Um, it's a chance to, to save some money. Is it the most lucrative of everything? No, but it's, it's not, uh, something to sneeze at. And so we want to take advantage of the programs while they're still there. The tax credits are going away. So that's, that's the big constraint is that we have to have stuff under construction by the end of June next year because of what happened in the big beautiful bill. And the USDA programs are getting revised too. Who knows what that funding is gonna be, uh, in the next quarter? I already know if change is coming and I don't know how it's gonna impact us. Nobody does.
I guess that's, that's one of my primary questions is we, we know there have been several federal grants that have just been
Yanked.
Told back. So what is, what does that look like if you get started on this project and you believe you have a USDA grant and then that doesn't come through? What is, what happens?
That's why the solar for this building would be contingent on the grant. We would, what we would do is we would apply for the interconnects with Alliant because it's part of the, and, and I have to find out if, because of the timing of it, if we have to do separate applications for the battery and the solar or August one. But we would make those applications because they take, they take time. Alliant will probably take three months to go through the applications on these two because of the size and complexity. Um, so we would go through that at our risk and then we wouldn't buy equipment on the administrative piece of it, the solar for the administrative piece. Because that's where I do need the grant to make it pencil out, and for tax reasons, it has to pencil out to an extent, okay? So we would go that far, and then if the USDA says, nope, you're not approved, you didn't score, we don't have funding, then we just, that piece would stop. We would finish the two batteries and the solar at the Justice Center, so those would go forward regardless. Um, and we take the risk, so it's whether I break even or maybe make a little bit of money depending on the grant.
Gotcha.
But from your standpoint, as the county, you don't have any risk involved. We would move forward with the two batteries and solar to justice. Just the, the, just, the admin solar would be contingent, so it could fall apart and not happen.
Gotcha.
So what's the term?
What's that?
The term, end of term. I'm, I'm looking at end of term options on your chart and I'd like to know what they are, but what is the term?
Twenty years.
Twenty years.
So twenty-year power purchase agreement, you're agreeing to buy the electricity from us that we produce for twenty years. Um, it's got a two and a half percent annual increase, you know, at the, the solar at the, starts at five, gotta put my glasses on, five cents and then it goes up two and a half percent a year. And that, there will be a rate schedule in the contract, so you can look up and go, okay, year seventeen, it's this much.
And then what happens at the end of the twenty years?
At the end of the twenty years, we've got three options. We can continue it for another five years, just extend the contract, keep going down with the program. Um, you can buy it at fair market value, which usually takes about two years to pay for it after a twenty-year life. Or you can say, hey, we don't want it anymore, take it off our property. And at that point, I'll remove the equipment, um, try to get it back to as close to what it looks like now. I mean, I'm not gonna peel conduits out of the ground. We're gonna whack them off so you can't see them, but, you know, we're gonna ban and stuff in place, sort of thing.
Okay.
Haven't had to do that yet, but we haven't gotten to twenty years. We've been around for ten, but not twenty.
And there's no issue with this being on top of the, um.
Well-filled.
Well-filled.
Yeah, we, there, there's, it's called a ballast system. It's, you know, basically concrete blocks hold it down to the ground instead of drilling holes to put footings underneath. And we've had that discussion to make sure that we don't disrupt that well field. And then we have a route, since we fully know where that pipes are located in the ground out there, so where we would bring the connection to the meter, so to speak, we know where to bring that to stay way away from those two eight-inch lines.
That's what I hoped is after the last
Yeah.
Yes.
Fiasco that now we, we, it was an expressive lesson, but we found where it is.
We got there.
Not sure I've heard the fiasco, but I'm not sure if I want to know.
So then the concrete
The bad thing happened.
Isn't gonna be too heavy.
No.
Okay.
Nope.
And it doesn't necessarily have to be right on top of it.
Well, yeah, I mean, there's a lot of, I mean, when you start looking at it at like pounds per square inch type situation, no, it's not. It's spread out enough to where it's not like gonna compact the ground on top of the, the wells, which are supposed to be, the top of the well should, should be five feet below the surface of the ground, but I'm not gonna say they are, so. But yeah, and then like, as you pointed out, if we, at the end, if we decided we don't want it no more, um, the building, if we did the solar at the administration building, it would probably be the one with the most remnants of structure left, because it would have canopies, so you got concrete bollards that might be sticking out of the ground, that type of stuff, but. You know, to me, like you pointed out, it is on our side, it is, they take a lot of the risk, you know, big risk on us. I, I, I'm gonna use the word big very easily, is, you know, ten-year-old company, what if they're not around? But they're also a company structured at a point that it's not like, we theoretically aren't gonna be just hanging out there with a whole bunch of stuff that we gotta do something with, but.
And then if there's a derecho, I know we talked about it, but
Been through two of them.
Yeah, so if there's damage, your company takes care of repairing the damage?
Okay, so, I mean, we had, we've had two derachos since I've owned systems. The last one that came right through here. We had thirty-five systems in its path. Um, we had damaged a three. And we repaired them. I mean, one of them was just a single panel, so it took us half an hour. The other one down Knoxville took a couple days and, um, one in Cedar Rapids was a fun one, but it kept the roof on the ambulance service, so they appreciated that. Uh, no, it's, it's ours to, we insure it for wind and hail, so derachos counts as wind.
Yep.
Um, and then we have liability insurance on it, so it's our equipment to, uh, uh, to repair, replace. I mean, that's, that's part of the beauty of this too, is that from your standpoint, you don't have the risk of production. You know, we take on the risk of production. I mean, if it doesn't produce electricity, I can't sell you electricity. Okay, so I'm seeing it's gonna produce, you know, combined one point nine million kilowatt hours a year, okay? Well, I'm banking on that and I guarantee the loan, so mine are conservative, but it's my risk. If I don't watch it and fix it when something gets tripped or whatever, you know, it's mutually beneficial, because every, every kilowatt hour I produce saves you money. So yes, I may be calling up Joby and saying, hey, can you see if that, that disconnect is still on or something, you know? Um, but, you know, we'll come up and fix it, because I, I wanna sell you as much electricity as I can, because.
So your projection is that it's gonna cover all our needs for these two buildings, plus?
Um, our projection is we've got a size to just about produce about ninety, yeah, almost a hundred percent, not quite, just light for an annual basis. You're still tied to Alliant, so you're still gonna use them at night. Use them more in the winter. We overproduce in the summer. The net metering law that we're trying to take advantage of well, which goes away in another year and a half, um, allows us to use them as, as part of the grid. The batteries are there for your demand charges, which is seventy percent of your electricity bill. So we're using that to basically manage how we utilize electricity and the timing of it throughout the day. So, and that takes a little bit of time to get learned in on how to get the settings right. And we've got one in Albia and, and it's, it actually, it, it's been up and running for what are we, September now, so about seven months, um, and it's now starting to really click. Uh, it did better last month than I expected, but it, it takes a little bit of time.
Are the ground arrays at Justice, you put in Justice, are those fixed or do they move?
They're fixed.
Okay.
They're all fixed.
Alliant's been experimenting with the movable ones.
Yes, um, we've looked at them too. Um, what we find is we get fifteen percent more production, but it costs about fifteen percent more. And there's more than fifteen percent more hassle because they got moving parts.
Okay.
I do have one question for you, Terry, since brought up damage, where does vandalism fall?
That's a good question. I'm hoping we don't have an issue at the Justice Center.
You wouldn't think that would be a facility, but you never know. People do weird stuff.
Um, it's a good question that comes up. I, where should it fall? I guess that's a big question, is, is should vandalism be on us or should it be on the county? We've kind of been lackadaisical with it, to be honest with you. I've replaced, I haven't had much. You know, we've got a hundred and sixty systems throughout the state. We've had vandalism on over the last ten years on three. Um, one was, we didn't have it fenced and it was next to a trailer park and there were some kids that were not supervised, and they decided our, uh, ground array was a slide.
Oh, a slide?
A slide.
Oh.
So they would climb up it and slide down it, and they cracked a bunch. And then they decided throwing bricks at it would be good too. So we put up a fence and that took care of it. Um, that was the city of Lisbon. They put up the fence. We replaced the panels, so it was kind of a joint effort to resolve that. Um, I had some uh, rocks thrown at one down in Knoxville, um, a couple panels. Uh, they stepped up the patrols in the area. We replaced the panels. Um, haven't had any issues since.
Is the plan to fence the one at Justice?
No.
It's not in the plan, no.
Gosh, if we had to fence the justice, that, you know, by the jail, that'd be kind of.
I mean, people do some
I know.
And, and there's the park and playground, like, or the sports park and stuff. I mean, people, people do, people do crazy things.
Um, we'll consider the fencing. There is other benefits of doing the fencing for us, because there's some things code-wise that we don't have to protect if it's fenced. Um, you know, somebody, if it's not fenced, somebody can get shocked with, with unprotected wires. But if it's fenced, they had to jump fence, so that's on them if they have to jump fence. And, and we may decide to fence that. Uh, obviously here canopy, canopy is way up in the air, so there's no fencing on it.
Yeah.
That'd be kind of awkward.
And we obviously can't ensure what we don't own.
Exactly. That's why I brought it up. Have you put that in any of your contracts specifically called out vandalism?
Um, I don't think we have. I know we've had it in discussions. Uh, we had a discussion with Mahaska County. There was at a nature center that was along the river and they were concerned. We got, it was back and forth on whether we wanted a fence or not. The fence is usually the, the way to go about a ground mount to, to deal with it. But we've got other facilities that aren't fenced. Um, Potawatomi County, Hamilton County. There's probably a couple others. I can't remember them all, and we haven't had, except, we rarely have issues. Like I said, three times out of the last ten years on a hundred and sixty systems is pretty good.
And it could be something that if it turns out it's a problem, we talk about a fence then.
Right.
Because a fence is no small expense.
No.
But would we be liable? If there were vandalism on there, who, who's liable? Is that you or us?
That was the question.
Yeah.
That's what Linda pointed out, that if we don't own the, the array, then we, we would be unable to insure it.
Right.
So let's say somebody, you know, something happened to one panel. Let's say it was, you know, what kind of cost are you looking at?
Um, panels cost two hundred and fifty bucks a piece, three hundred dollars a piece, depending on what size we end up using uh, for the equipment and, you know, a couple hours. I mean, it's all plug and play, so a couple hours at, you know, a hundred bucks an hour. So you're talking five hundred bucks to replace a panel.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I think fencing at the, at the Justice Center would probably be prudent. It would help us as the, from an electrical standpoint too. It's one big array, so.
Other questions, comments, more direction for Joby?
I think it's a great opportunity.
Do too.
I do too.
I know, we've been talking about it since
Yeah, yeah, for, for a number of years now. It's been on our radar, you know, and we'd looked at like, you know, in our previous discussions, which Terry and I talked about, it was, you know, the roof of that, when we re-roofed it, we took that into consideration, but since we can accomplish it on the ground, we'd rather not have them on the roof, you know, because they would be in the way. And then we have roof equipment that we'd have to
Yeah, right.
Yeah. Fluctuate around the array on the roof and then just, yeah.
Fortunately, we have the space to do it.
Yes.
Right.
I'm glad we got one that could pencil out. I mean,
Yeah.
Uh, I, you know, everybody thinks that it's always the, you know, pie in the sky. Well, it doesn't always work out. Numbers don't always crunch out. I mean, this one doesn't crunch out without the, the grant.
Right.
But I'm glad that it does and it's significant, so.
When will you be applying for the grant?
Uh, October first is when it's open, so we'll, we'll apply in early October that, the, they do it on a quarterly basis, so that will be open until end of the year. So we won't know anything until probably February
Okay.
At the earliest. And we've had times in the past where I haven't heard for months. But we're gonna get it in, in early October, assuming you approve. You know, we contract, so the time would be, we get contracted, we get started with all the permits so we can get Alliant's timeframe clicking. Get that clock going, because that, I feel will, it's only supposed to take a month. But then they'll come back and once, usually they'll, the size of a project and complexity, they'll ask for additional information and additional information. It seems to drag out for three months, okay? Once we get approval, then the construction is the quickest part.
Yeah.
Right. The batteries do take some time. They have about a six-month lead time on them, so those will be in the spring more than likely. Um, on when I get those. The solar I could get done before the end of the year, and we would like to at the Justice Center. Um, we'll apply for the grant in early October, probably won't hear until, like I said, February. And as soon as we get the, yes, you've been approved or not approved, and if we're not approved, then that just kind of kills that piece. But if we get approved, then we'll go right into ordering materials for the canopy and equipment and, um, so that we can get it under construction before the end of June. Finish it before the end of next year and make you clean and green by the end of the year.
Where are the batteries manufactured?
The batteries are made in China.
Okay. Um, rest of the equipment, is it all, is any of it made in the United States or?
Yep, the, the panels that we have planned are assembled in, I want to say Georgia. Um, they're Chinese manufactured, but they assemble them here in the US. Uh, the inverters that we're planning to use are made in Illinois. Uh, the inverters that we're planning to use are made in Illinois. And, and there's incentives for me to make sure that they are, and all the racking is made in the US, so um, the only thing that's not on this project are the batteries, and right now I can't get batteries. You can get some Tesla batteries, but they're way out there in lead time and very expensive. I mean, for this size of a project, I mean, we'd be probably two years out. But that is, and that, I mean, it does, the, you know, I'm, I'm basing it on a twenty percent tariff out of China, that could change. We all know that, um. Yeah.
Lots of uncertainty.
Yeah, uncertainty is fun.
Hmm, yeah, that's a word.
But I'm pretty certain you're still gonna use electricity.
Indeed.
So you're gonna need it, um, pretty certain that coal-fired electricity is still gonna pollute the air. Um, and we don't need that, and the numbers work out, so.
Great.
Don't know what your electricity bill from Alliant's gonna be next year, but this will give you some certainty because you'll know what your electricity from us will be for the next twenty years.
Great. I think it sounds great. Yep, right. You have what you need, Joby?
Yeah, I just, direction to work with Crystal and Terry to
Yep.
Get an agreement together?
Yep.
All right.
Right.
All right.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next upcoming agenda items, anyone have any upcoming agenda items?
Yeah, there will be something coming from CIJDC on the next agenda. The new twenty-eighty agreement, there's been a, an agreement reached in the lawsuit with Hardin County.
Okay, 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 and I think, um, been working with Crystal Davis on this, the CFR request, I think will be on next week's agenda
Oh, great.
As well, from previously, so.
Wonderful.
All right, now's the time for public comment number two, comments from the public on items not on this agenda. The board may not take any action on comments due to the requirements of open meetings law, but may do so in the future. If anyone's in the public meeting room and would like to make public comment, please come forward, or if you're on Zoom, please raise your hand. And seeing none, we will close public comment number two, liaison assignments, committee meeting updates and announcements, Supervisor Merkin?
Yes, I have a couple meetings, um, tomorrow morning here, uh, one about a shelter issue, and then we have a staff meeting at nine. I'll be out in the afternoon on personal business. Thursday, an Alliance Executive Committee meeting in early morning. And Friday, I've got um, meeting with engineer, um, and a lunch meeting. And Monday, we have a joint WA meeting and Stanhope and Amepha Executive Committee meeting in the afternoon.
Supervisor Faisal?
Yes, I've got a boost meeting um, this evening. Board meet, or um, staff meeting tomorrow. I'm doing the IPID training tomorrow in the afternoon. Looks like our asset joint funders meeting was canceled for Thursday. Friday morning is the United Way Day of Caring kickoff, and then Burger Fest in the afternoon. Um, and then Saturday is the community recycling event, electronics recycling event at um, the Story County Fair grounds.
What's the time again from that? Ten to two, thank you.
Um, Monday. Um, Monday morning I have a dentist appointment, and then um, I have a NACO IT Standing Committee meeting in the afternoon.
I have a Communities of Excellence meeting this afternoon over in Ames, and then I have a HARC meeting tomorrow night. Tomorrow I have the board staff meeting, um, meeting with Brenda with the Alliance, and then the IPID, and then a NACO uh, workforce meeting. So far, I have nothing on Thursday. Uh, Friday, I um, have a PT appointment, then I Burger Fest, and then I'll be over in Ames for DCAT. And Monday, there's a new staff person arriving, and so my plan is to be here to meet a new staff person, and not sure yet if I have a Friendship HARC meeting later that afternoon or not. We had days mixed up and they canceled for yesterday, of which we didn't have a meeting, so I'm not sure if we have a meeting on Monday or not. Uh, and if there is nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, Faisal?
Hi.
Merkin?
Hi.
Head and eye, we are adjourned.